I now call to order the April 27th meeting of the Sugarland Planning and Zoning Commission. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you. Item two, public comment. Do we have anyone wishing to address the commission this evening? Anybody signed up? Great. I will close the public hearing. Public comment, excuse me, uh, public comment. And move on to item three A, consideration of inaction on the minutes of the April 11th meeting. And the minutes are in your packet. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion. Oh, second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, please vote at this time. Uh, motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner.
Pree.
Alright, thank you very much. Item four is public hearing and consideration of an action on a recommendation for the proposed rezoning of planned development, general development plan to Telfair West Commercial District, pack tract C dash three A. Plan development, final development plan for approximately eight point four two six acres at the northwest corner of intersection of the intersection of University Boulevard and US Highway 59 to the members and city council. At this time, we will, uh, hear from Laura and then we'll open a public hearing momentarily and then have discussion among the commissioners. Laura, take it away.
Good evening. So we're here to talk about an FDP. Uh, like, um, Taylor mentioned, this is at the northwest corner of the intersection of 59 and University. So it's highlighted here on the map. So all of these areas, um, have already been PD'd. They've gone through their FDP processes. Um, and this Tarrington was the most recent, I believe. And so now this is kind of that final corner that's going to come into play here. So, uh, just an overview, this is a vacant property that's currently under GDP ordinance number twenty-one thirty-five. Uh, and the property owner is now ready to move forward with the final development. So it is, uh, proposed to be three single-story buildings built in three reserves with an access easement running down the middle. Um, the GDP did propose a maximum of seventy thousand square feet for a single building. However, the FDP does, uh, propose a seventy-five thousand, uh, square foot home improvement store on Reserve C. Uh, that home improvement store is also, um, authorized in the, uh, FDP to use a different parking ratio if that is supported by a parking study for a similar business in a similar area. Uh, the access easement is wide enough at the, uh, the orphan portion of it to provide queuing lane also on it for the coffee shop that's proposed to go into that retail center. And the FDP is in alignment with the land use plan as part of their regional commercial and services, um, designation. So, uh, going back to that land use plan, so this is an excerpt from our future land use map. Um, as you can see, this is regional commercial and services which, um, per our land use plan is ideal for car-oriented retail and services. That includes a big box stores and other development that's, um, not appropriate for pedestrian-oriented activity centers. So, um, this is completely in line with that regional commercial and services designation. So here we get into the site plan. So, um, as mentioned, this is the, uh, the larger home improvement store here on Reserve C at the rear. Then there is a multi-tenant retail building on Reserve A, as well as the, um, uh, drive-through lane here that would queue here on the, the surface, the, uh, access easement. And then there is also proposed to be, um, a bank on that Reserve B near the front corner. Landscape plan does include adding, um, pretty much a tree in between every other existing tree. There is some landscaping that's already been done, um, during the development of the, the general development plan. Uh, but this final development plan does call for adding in, um, a decent amount of trees, uh, that you can see here on the plan as well as, um, other screening. That is necessary for the parking areas, um, and the, uh, mitigate, sorry. The minimum caliber of the trees are going to need to be the, the four inch minimum and the ten foot tall rather than the, the standard that's in our development code. Also, uh, pedestrian and bike plans do call for pedestrian walkways. So those are going to be made of alternative paving with shade as well as lighting every thirty feet. Um, so that's going to be something that is required along those pedestrian walkways to connect the area. Make sure that people can walk from side to side if necessary. So we have the elevations for the three different buildings as well. So this is the, uh, proposed elevation for the retail building. That's the multi-tenant retail building in Reserve A. Um, we have the, uh, bank elevations. Those are proposed, um, for Reserve B. And then the home improvement store to go on that Reserve C. The public hearing notice requirements were all met per the state. A notification posted online and in the paper as well as mailers sent out to property was within two hundred feet. An online form was available to provide comments. Um, however, we have received no inquiries and we are not aware of any opposition to the FDP. And therefore staff does support a recommendation of approval to mayor and city council for the proposed final development plan. There are two very small edits that we found in the text, um, that we would also like to add to the recommendation. And that would be to, um, so there was previously some phasing that we just took out so that the buildings can be built in whatever order necessary. So it would be to change phase one to Reserve A. That would be on page six, uh, letter F, number three. And then on page nine, um, letter H, letter D would be to remove in phase A. So, um, that would be part of the, the motion if possible. And with that, we have the, uh, excuse me, the public hearing and then consideration in action. Thank you.
Laura, let's go ahead and, and recover that ground just real quick. Um, let me catch up to where we are on the found of, in the packet here. So you said page six?
Yes, so there are two, two small errors that is on page six near the bottom.
Okay.
F three, phase one, needs to be changed to Reserve A.
And s-
And then page nine.
Instead of the public pedestrian part, whereas?
Instead of in phase one, it would be in, um, as part of Reserve A.
Got it.
And then on page nine, it says in phase A, it should just, um, it can be removed. It's not necessary there. That'll be page nine at the very bottom, letter D.
And so do we just the facades, begin with the facades? Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, at this time, I will open the public hearing and receive and hear all persons desiring to be heard on the proposed rezoning, rezoning for approximately eight point four two six acres at the northwest corner of the intersection of University Boulevard, Boulevard and US Highway 59. Do we have anyone registered to?
No, nobody.
Very good. Anyone wishing to provide public, uh, or participate in the public hearing? Great. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and move on to discussion. Um, and I will, um, start with Commissioner Patel.
Let me pass.
Okay. Got it. Very good. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions just for clarity. In the multi-use, uh, retail, the twelve thousand square foot, do we really know how that would be built out or is that just something that would be done, I guess, ad hoc? My, my question really is, is if there's anything that, uh, if, if, if there are areas that are built out that aren't the twenty-five hundred maximum that you need for the tobacco or the restaurant with the drive-through, which I guess that's already out if it's a multi-retail tenant, then should they even be in the uses? So it's got a maximum square footage?
Right, so-
And so that I figured, well, after these get built out, would that automatically then preclude them from being able to be a part of that?
It would, um, but so it depends on the order of which tenants move in first. So it's that, in that case, it's kind of a first come, first served. So if there's not twenty-five hundred square feet left for that tenant, there's only a smaller tenant space and that use would not be allowed in that space.
Right, so if they divvy it up in, in sections larger than twenty-five hundred, then the, then these uses would not be viable because it's the max?
Potentially, or, um, but tenant spaces can always be, um, combined. They can be remodeled into any kind of sort of, uh, way down the line. Um, it's built typically as a shell building and then the tenant spaces are, are built out individually as different uses come along.
So really wouldn't with the drive-through, wouldn't that, that only be available, I guess, if the bank?
So the, there's a drive-through at, uh, so let me go back to the site plan. So there is a drive-through here on the end of the retail center. So there's a drive-through window here.
Could be. Okay. Alright. Thank you. Uh, next question's on the pedestrian walkways and I'm thinking that it's probably just not on the, on the drawing. But I'm thinking for the home improvement building, you know, you've got the pedestrian walkways coming in from, uh, Coatsworth Avenue and then across the, uh, the area, but wouldn't it also need to have like a pedestrian walkway around there to, to link those two so that you could go into the entry?
So there is going to be typically entry points on both sides. Uh, there's going to be an entrance, although the main entrance would primarily be the front. Um, but there's typically sidewalks that are around the building itself. So if you look here on the site plan, you can kind of see that there's sidewalks here along the front and then a little delivery bay.
Okay. And then my other question was just getting back to the, uh, the, the, the traffic flow inside of the areas between the retail and the bank. You know, you, all of the, it's sort of like the, it seems to me you're coming in, but then you've got to sort of push them out because there's only exits along the Coatsworth Avenue area. So is there going to be some kind of directional or something to make sure that people are like coming the right way?
I'll let our, um, traffic expert speak on that.
Just seems a very tight.
Yeah.
Uh, good, good evening commissioners. Uh, my name is Jason Vaughn with the, uh, City Sugarland Public Works Traffic Division. And, uh, Commissioner, uh, for your question in that, um, yeah, they have the three driveways off of, off of Coatsworth. Um, and basically the second driveway is the main easement. Um, so the traffic, uh, from what I could tell from the, uh, traffic impact study would flow in from the, from the main easement there, uh, over to, uh, the home improvement store and over to the tenant and bank, um, so basically coming in, but they can circulate back out to the other driveways. And that, so, um, I guess, uh, you mentioned, uh, it was kind of tight.
Yeah, between the retail and the bank. So what you're saying is that, um, there's only would be one way into driveway two? You're, there won't be a through for being able, for traffic going both ways on Coatsworth to come in the driveway two?
Uh, I'd say for driveways one, two, and three, uh, there was- Actually, uh-
Right.
Peter, could you, uh, help with this question? I think most, most of the easements are, they're, they're two lanes wide, twenty-six foot wide. And that, so, um, I'm gonna ask Peter if, uh, he can also confirm.
Peter Brocher was EHRA. Could you repeat the question?
Right, so it seems to me because there's these drive-throughs that are in this area before there, there'll be potentially one for the retail and there's one for the bank. So my question was, um, it seems very tight in here to try to get the traffic all flowing the right direction to come in and then exit since there's no, the exit, the exits are on the same as you're coming in. So it's like people have to go around in a circle there.
Yes.
Right? I mean, so is there something so you don't start going the wrong direction? Is, how are you guys gonna get the traffic flowing the right way?
Typically directional signage, especially with a bank, so that you know which way the lanes, they want you to come through the lanes. And, and for example, this, on this site, you would go from south to north on the lanes because the driver wants to be on the side where the windows are for a bank building. So you would be coming down the center pedestrian access easement in front of the bank building and then coming counterclockwise to those drive-through lanes. So you're, you're exiting to the north and yes, you may be meeting up with the exiting traffic out of the coffee shop.
Right, so you could be coming in through driveway one and going towards the, the, the bank. And then you could have people coming out from the retail and from the bank. And then they're all three merging in that little area there where I'm guessing there's going to be parking too.
Yes, but I would expect, and we, we don't get it on the zoning level, but on the site plan level, I would expect directional signage that you would have at that point you're talking about on the bank property to direct you around since you don't, they don't, they don't want the traffic coming at the drive-through lanes from that way. So they're gonna, they're gonna want to direct you around their side counterclockwise to come in the right direction. And so you would, you would, you would drive down sort of that parking area that splits the reserve line between the multi-tenant retail and the bank building.
And I guess people are just gonna learn because if they go into that retail area, they've got to know that they sort of have to, they don't go around the building. They have to go out the same direction and not towards the bank. I just know that this can be very congested because I've been over where Chick-fil-A is at just recently and they've got all those drive-throughs coming in and, uh, you trying to get over to, um, the Italian restaurant and it's just converges right there in that one entrance.
Chick-fil-A is driving crazy.
But it's still, still we have two drive-throughs there. Yeah.
Nah, I've worked on Chick-fil-A's and they're just like blow the socks off.
Yeah.
Drive-through traffic.
But it's a, well, yeah, if it's, yeah. Anyway, just point taken. I understand what you're saying, so, thanks.
Anything else? Great. Um, are you ready?
Close to this location. I'm okay to speak on this subject? I wanted the attorney's opinion. Um, I'm at forty-seven oh nine Stratford. I, I don't barely, I hardly ever check my mail, so, so I wanna make sure. I'm literally, yeah, okay, okay. So my, my question was on the signage. Where exactly is that signage on this University Boulevard? And is it electronic or is it like one of their signages that's matching what's out there already?
So there's actually no proposed monument signs along University per this plan. The, the signs would be along fifty-nine where those three stars are.
So it's two signages on fifty-nine?
There's three stars. Um, I'm not sure exactly, so there's room for three if they put them at the edges.
Okay.
For a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot spacing. But yes, the style does match the rest of the style in the area.
The brick on the sides and?
Yes, it will, it, so that's per the GDP. That's all adopted from that. So all these areas have the same style signage.
Okay. Yeah, that was kind of my only question. And the trees are taller than the regular trees that are down University, you were saying?
So they're, they're bigger than what we require per our standard code. They're standard per our PD requirement.
And they're big all the way around or just on the fifty-nine frontage?
The, they will go all the way around. So as you, so the, um, green that exists without the plus is already there and all of the pluses would be required to be planted at the time of development. So additional trees.
Okay.
And they do circle the entire site.
And where is the dumpster located?
Dumpster location, uh, would be determined at the time of site plan. Um, I'm assuming it would be probably towards the rear of the buildings. Ah, here they are.
Exhibit B two, the site plan.
Oh, okay.
I was looking at the wrong, this is slide on the screen now.
B two. B six?
B two.
B two. Oh, I see it. Okay. I think that is my only question for now.
Okay. Great. Commissioner Pree?
Yeah, she's, my colleague covered all of them. I, the same concerns, I feel like there's going to be a huge traffic jam as the Starbucks, let's call it, for whatever that, whatever the drive-through is, them coming up to, towards, go towards driveway one and the bank customers as well. But I think we kind of covered that ad nauseam. The other thing that I had is you mentioned something about a parking, uh, exception for one of the the buildings. Which one was that? And can you maybe go into a little bit more depth on?
Of course.
What was decided there?
Uh, the home improvement store, um, per the, the text of the FDP, uh, would be allowed to use an alternative parking ratio rather than what is in our standard development code. So our standard development code, uh, I can't remember the exact number. I believe it's one per three hundred square feet of spaces is required. However, um, the proposed tenant is Flora and Decor who has a different model, uh, for their business. So it is primary, it's more like you, uh, walk around a large, um, warehouse. So the majority of their square footage is devoted to warehouse rather than shopping. Um, so if the, the, the way to word it so that it's not, um, brand-specific would be that it is a home improvement store who has the majority of their area is still warehouse. Um, but there is some retail component, um, that I believe that is covered in the text as well, um, for, for the allowed use as well as uh, the parking study would be done so that supports the different ratio for similar sites in similar locations. So we have a parking study that would need to be conducted by a, a traffic professional for other floor and decor sites at major intersections like this one to support the, uh, the parking ratio that they are proposing at the time of site plan. And any future tenants, if Flora and Decor were to ever move out, would also have to provide a similar parking study or adjust their building and parking site layout accordingly so that they can park it.
Got it. That's all I had. Great. Commissioner Brown?
Good afternoon. Thank you. I've got a few questions for you today. Um, the first one's tied kind of to what they're talking about, which is in terms of the vehicular traffic. If you look at the developmental, developmental regulations DA, it says no vehicular access shall connect you to University Boulevard or US Highway fifty-nine. Um, I think we saw that, not in Sugarland, but down where Rudy's is, right? We had some developments down there that were obviously Richmond, but you couldn't get into them. So they ended up putting in a deceleration lane. Is there any consideration here for that? Because you've got a very tight pattern here for traffic. Is there a reason you didn't? Was it a, was it city code? You just didn't want a driveway on University? I figured text out on fifty-nine.
I would say, uh, Commissioner, um, I can answer one for the, uh, highway fifty-nine. That was one of the questions that the staff, uh, asked, uh, the consultant for the TIA, uh, had researched into it, um, with, uh, the fifty-nine frontage road, uh, being, uh, that's a, uh, text that, uh, maintained. Uh, we'd have to meet the, uh, uh, text dots, uh, four-hundred-and-twenty-five foot, uh, driveway spacing. And, uh, they also have, uh, certain limits due to drainage in that, uh, which, uh, it, uh, it didn't meet the driveway spacing requirements for text dot.
But any, any consideration on University? Because you're seeing what's happening with Costco, right? In Costco, they're adding driveways because of traffic. And I just, I'm just asking, is there a prohibition here that at no point this could happen? Or if you get into this deal and all of a sudden you've got a traffic issue, could you, could you put a driveway on University?
Uh, one of the things, uh, during the TIA process, uh, we discussed about the driveway access on University. And, um, one of the concerns is the, uh, the amount of traffic there on University in that. And, uh, you're in the, um, basically the functional area, the interchange. Uh, you have your left turn lanes and your right turn lanes, uh, right there, uh, in front of the property. And that, so, uh, safety was one of the concerns. Excuse me. Uh, if you put a driveway there, uh, the concerns was, uh, someone coming out there trying to, um, go across, um-
But you'd, you'd have that anywhere though, right? I mean, you, you could make that argument in any development on highway six or fifty-nine anywhere, so, um-
That is true, but, um, um, we as traffic engineers, uh, we, we want to watch especially on the approaches to the major intersections and major, uh, interchanges.
Okay.
Having driveways that access and then, uh, the safety concern is someone coming across multiple lanes of through traffic to try to get into the left turn lane. And that, um, uh, there's a risk of increasing accidents.
Okay.
Being in the functional area.
Item five, or actually item six. Um, outside dining areas, as restaurants and bars that provide adjacent areas for outdoor dining shall adhere to the following. I don't see any outside dining proposed at all in this development. Is there anything that's considered?
So, um, a tenant here at the other end of the multi-retail could put a little patio out here, I believe, was the, the thought behind that.
So that could be a patio area there on the end?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Item five, let's see, I'm on the right page, page six. Top of page six, item six. Um, in the easement area, these pipeline companies can be very restrictive on plantings. Uh, and it says that you would plant in according to what they would allow. Do we know if they're gonna allow plantings in that easement at all? Has that been looked into?
I don't know.
Peter, you're raising a sand.
If you look back at the original easement document, it would allow certain plantings like shrubs and ground covers, but not trees. Because they don't want the roots-
Right.
Going down there. So that, that is addressed in the original easement document for that pipeline.
Are we showing trees on this?
No, we're showing trees-
They're outside the easement?
We're showing trees pursuant to the GDP. We're showing the possibility of trees in text dots right of way.
Okay.
Subject, subject to their review and approval and knowing who's gonna take care of those trees.
Okay.
That's in the previous section in four B, top of page five.
Four B, top of page five. Okay.
You can also see that there's, um, two rows of trees on the landscaping plan. So it's outside. So these are along the property line at the edge of the easement. And then these are in that text dot right of way. So they're not in the pipeline.
Exactly. I don't know if this, how this easement abuts the, the dealership that would be to the west, but it looks like they paved over that at least to some degree. And it looks like they, they've got just shrubs in that area.
So I, I believe it actually ends. It's this hatched area here in yellow, um, here. So I, I believe it actually- Does it end here or does it turn?
I think the pipeline actually goes in the text I right of way.
Okay, so it makes a turn?
Makes a turn.
Okay.
Or bend.
Fair enough. Um, bottom of page six, item three. It talks about the pedestrian area um, that is part of this development and it puts that development area right on the corner of Coatsworth and University Boulevard.
Yes.
That's kind of a no man's land on this, right? Who's gonna, I'm just asking. It's, it's supposed to be an amenity. And it seems like it's kind of stuck out here on the noisy, busy, crowded intersection. Is that the best place for it?
So that's actually called for in the GDP that it goes on that corner to mirror the one that's on the other side of Coatsworth.
So that's what this circle is at the top then we're seeing on the map?
Yes.
Okay. Alright. Couple of others. The dumpster screening, that's what we're seeing called out on page eleven, figure nine. That's the dumpster screening that's to be expected this there? Or is it gonna be a solid surface?
So it could be either. Um, that is, uh, it's up to the, the developer if he wants to do metal screening or he could do masonry. It's, it's up to him.
Answered that question on the parking. That's all I've got. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Laura, a couple of questions. Uh, in your layout, you mentioned that, um, going to the seventy-five thousand was outside of the general development plan. I, I could very well be missing it, but I don't see where that is, is, is referenced other than where it says in section C, it does say home improvement store five, uh, seventy-five thousand square feet. Is that, is that all that's needed to be sure that, that the, okay?
Yes, because this will replace the GDP for the zoning.
Got it, okay. Makes sense. I'm gonna, I'm gonna harp a little bit on the traffic as well. Um, and maybe it's just a question. As you're looking at where University Boulevard is actually, um, like the words on this, um, particular exhibit are, there's that left turn only lane, um, that would go on to Coatsworth. Is there, um, is there an actual queuing depth to that lane?
So we actually, that was studied very intensely in the TIA that was concurred with, uh, and all concerns from our traffic division were addressed in that.
Good deal. And then, uh, is there a reason? Good deal. Um, and then, uh, is there a reason, this is perhaps more curiosity than anything else? All the landscaping trees are, there, there's nothing in the islands. Is that on purpose?
So that's just because, um, the, the extra regulations in the code are about the stuff around the perimeter. They will have to meet standard parking lots, shrubbery per amount of spaces in the lot. That's standard per our development code. There must be one shade tree for every 20 spaces, other things like that. That is our standard requirement.
Got it.
But they will have to be the higher, uh, the bigger caliper as well as the, uh, higher height, uh, per the PD.
Sounds good. Um, and then my last question is, um, so you remember on the, the development where like Burlington is?
Mm-hmm.
We had an issue that we didn't address as a commission, um, right off the bat, which is, um, the, the sign facades came up above the, um, the, the top of the building. So you're basically looking at just kind of an ugly, um, piece from 59.
Mm-hmm. The back of the sign.
Yeah, the back of the facade. Um, I'm curious here and, and maybe this is a question for Peter. This isn't, it looks to be just a little bit of an unusual orientation for this building in that it's east-west, um, facing, front and back, that is. Can you talk, if it's known, um, about what the sign facade would be on the, on the building?
So I can actually speak to that. So we have changed our standard development code requirements so that signs cannot project above the top of the facade of a building.
Okay. All right. Well, that's even better. We don't have to make it a condition. Um, good deal. Um, just let me be sure that's, yeah, that's all I had. Any other questions before we make a motion? Good deal. I'll go ahead and make a motion, uh, to, let me see here, let me get my stuff straight. Um, I'll make a motion to, uh, recommend approval for the, to the mayor and city council for the proposed rezoning from planned development, general development plan to Telphair West Commercial District, track C dash 3A, planned development and final development plan for approximately 8.426 acres at the northwest corner of the intersection of University Boulevard and US 59, uh, with the following two conditions. That in, on page six of the, uh, proposed final development plan in section F subsection 3, we delete phase 1 and replace with reserve A. And second condition being on page nine in section H subsection D, we strike in phase A at the beginning of that paragraph. Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion, uh, and a second by Commissioner Patel. We can vote at this time. Thank you. Thank you, Laura. All good. All right, moving on to item five workshop and review and discussion on City of Sugarland's redevelopment focus and all-in initiative. Lisa?
Hey, good evening, everyone. It's been a while since I've been up here, so let me get myself situated here. Good evening. So I'm excited to be here today to share with you, some of you have probably already heard, but, um, whether it's state of the city or just some of the messaging that the city's put out, but redevelopment is a key effort and focus for, um, our city council and for our city as a whole. So I'm going to be walking you through, um, just an introductory overview of it. Um, some of the things that are going to be coming to you to consider and act on will be directly related, um, to our redevelopment efforts. There are other things that I'm going to cover that are probably beyond anything that will come before you, but just to give you some greater context of, uh, this overall initiative and effort that we are, um, embarking on as a city. So we're going to touch on, we'll touch on a little bit about why we're focusing on redevelopment now, um, specifically an all-in initiative that has been created to really focus on redevelopment and then some of the upcoming work that we're working on as a city. So I know you've, you've probably seen an iteration of this, um, in, in other forms, whether it's through the land use plan or through, um, some of the other communications that we've put out. But really, why are we focusing on redevelopment? And this is, uh, the life cycle of a city. This is specifically Sugarland's life cycle. But really, we're at a, a really important, um, point in our history or in our timeline so far. We've had and seen a lot of rapid growth, um, for decades and we're kind of peaking now. And so we're at a point of what is, what is next? And, um, what does growth look like going forward for our community? And, um, so all of this, um, in, in terms of this cycle, um, it's not a one and done type of thing. It's not like, oh, you're just going to redevelop once, um, or you're not just going to see growth one time. It is, it's a cycle. And so, um, there is, this is really our first entrance into redevelopment. Um, this is not something that we've had to face before and so it is complex, it's difficult and it's new for us. And, um, but we're at a point where we have the opportunity to influence how we will grow and, and develop over, uh, the next coming decades. Also, I know you've, you've probably seen that this version of this map, um, and these statistics, um, in various forms as well. But we're at a point where we're needing to really reimagine how we will see growth. Currently, we're at about 4% undeveloped land left within the city. Um, so how can we really use the land that we have left? And reimagine the areas that have already developed so that we stay relevant, uh, we stay competitive with all of the other areas that are growing, um, across our region. And all of that in a way that we can continue to preserve the quality of life that we have here in Sugarland. Um, I know we've also touched on this before, but really it's, it's, it's really key, um, in terms of the overall, um, focus of, of what we're doing. It's the economic development, um, cycle. And there's, there's really three things that are needed, um, as, as part of the overall kind of how, how things all work together. You need, uh, jobs, you need people that want to live here. And then frankly, you need people that are either living here or visiting here to spend their money. So you have, you have jobs that are, and primary jobs that are here, um, that bring, whether it's workers or visitors to the community. You also have destination venues, Smart Financial, um, the stadium, the, with, um, the Space Cowboys, um, Constellation Field, excuse me. You have those destinations, even the mall, that bring people into, um, our area. And then those drive, um, people wanting to live here or demand for people wanting to visit here, which then, um, support, um, retail and other, um, types of revenue generating, uh, businesses here in our community, which then produce sales tax, hot tax, other types of revenue that the city can then use to, um, influence and, and build a great quality of life here with amenities that we create. And then they all kind of cycle back, um, together. They all have a relationship with one another and it's important that they flow in that. And so if there is not one, uh, component that is working, then the next kind of part of the cycle doesn't, doesn't kind of trigger and work either. The, the land use plan that was originally, uh, adopted in 2018 really set the stage for, um, the redevelopment focus included in its vision. These are, this is kind of an excerpt of it, but it really recognized that we're going to develop and redevelop, um, to remain a desirable place for the future. And that we're going to have to respond to changes, um, in shifts in demand. Um, so we recognize the need to shift our focus to redevelopment, even with some of the policies and goals that were established, um, through that effort. And we know that redevelopment was critical to maintaining of a long-term fiscal health of the city. So we've identified through that effort, um, targeted areas that would likely see redevelopment and where, essentially where the city would be focusing some of its efforts. And then of course, there were some very specific action items that we could do as a city to help influence, uh, the redevelopment outcome. And kind of where to get started. And specifically, those were related to activity centers. So we identified, um, regional activity centers and, and the, the text here and the, um, the, um, darkish maroon colored, um, areas on the map are related to the regional activity centers that were identified. And they were based on, uh, proximity to major roadways, existing level of activity within those areas. Or the activity that was envisioned to be in those areas, which would be a mix of use, um, compact areas that are very walkable, made for people to be able to easily get around and spend time in, um, that they would also be regional hubs that draw, um, people from across the region, but also serve our local community as well. And in that mix, there would be office, retail, um, residential, all integrated together. And most of the regional activity centers specifically, um, are current, but if they are currently developed, we're in a very car-centric, single-use, isolated kind of fashion. So any of the opportunities or ability to, um, revision these areas, the redevelopment would happen through infill, um, of these existing commercial areas. And those areas would most likely need to transform from kind of that car-centric, um, model to a more, um, walkable, walkable setting. The, the other element that we are also very cognizant of is, um, demographics and the kind of some data that we've been tracking related to our neighborhoods. So overall, we know that Sugarland is aging, both in our population and our housing stock. So we've consistently seen an increase in our median age. Uh, folks are staying here in our community in their homes longer. Also, we have seen some indication that, um, folks that are aging within the community and that are living in some of our older neighborhoods are struggling, starting to struggle to be able to maintain their homes. They're large, um, perhaps beyond their abilities. And so those things can have a direct impact on the image of a neighborhood or, um, even the ability or the attractiveness of people wanting to move into an area. We also know that we are largely detached, single-family homes is the majority of our housing stock. I think it's 80%, I believe, of, of the, um, residential housing types that we have here. So there's missing middle, which we have talked about in kind of broad terms. And that's anything between your standard kind of single family and then your more, um, you know, traditional or, um, multifamily type setting. So there's a wide range of, of other varieties, uh, of housing options, um, that we just have very limited amounts of here in the city. And so what opportunities are there again to introduce some of those, develop those to bring in other opportunities for folks? Whether they're currently already living here in the city and they want other options to be able to stay here or to be attractive to, um, you know, new folks coming into our area. We've done a great job of, of growing our jobs, but not necessarily our housing options. And thinking back through, um, to the kind of economic, um, development impact cycle, again, the housing is an important component. It's great to have jobs, but then those jobs, um, attract people and they, they want and they desire places that are closer to where they are working. But we haven't necessarily grown those opportunities and those options, um, over the, you know, the last five, seven years. Additionally, um, we are, we're, we're starting to look at how our region also operates. And, um, in comparing ourselves to other parts of the state, metropolitan parts of the state, we are seeing that there is a, a difference in kind of the, the density that we have at the regional level, which then influences our purchasing power at the regional level. And how that all kind of works is retailers and perhaps even employers are looking at those types of things when they are making decisions on where to locate those businesses, their businesses. We also, um, have seen a growing, um, concentration of single-family rental, um, within parts of our community.
Hey Lisa, on that last point, the purchasing power, that's of the individual, of the residents or business to business, like what?
Of the residents, the folks that are living here within the community, just the kind of the density that that brings with it. And, and so, uh, focusing on the, the concentration of single-family rental, what we're starting to see areas of the community, single-family rental is really starting to kind of concentrate. And so knowing that that can have an impact on, um, what vacant homes are available. And then also we're seeing trends related to institutional landlords and ownership, um, kind of beyond just the individual, but more of a kind of corporate kind of, so just being aware of, um, these and how they can impact, um, the city going forward. We're also looking at school trends. Um, we know a lot of people look, um, and pay attention and, and that is a key element for where they decide to locate is, is the, the quality, the, the health of the schools in the area. And so those are, all of these things, not, not one alone is, is an indicator of the health or maybe a decline of an area, but together we're looking at it from a big picture. And just need to be aware of how they all kind of work and influence, um, the image and how they impact our city. And then frankly, we've, we've heard some feedback. Um, there are some quotes up here from real estate, site selectors, business professionals, company representatives that we have started hearing over time. And, um, to the degree that they, um, are related to our development controls and processes that we have and really, uh, understanding how they possibly are working against our ability to achieve our desired goals, um, for a long-term, you know, sustainable, um, attractive, um, high-quality, um, community, um, we are, they, they can be a little, um, shocking, um, considering the success that we've had as, as a community. But we are asking ourselves, um, you know, what can we do to look at the ways that we, um, we have our codes? Can we modernize our codes to make it codes to make it easier, um, and more predictable for the development community? Not that we are just giving up all control and anything goes, but how can we make them clearer? How can we update them, um, so that maybe we, we aren't perceived, perceived as being lame or archaic? That we do, um, kind of re-establish ourselves as, um, being at the forefront rather than dying or, um, no longer relevant within, within, uh, the region. So all of that is kind of background for an all-in initiative that we have created, um, and, uh, related to redevelopment. It is the number one priority, um, of city council. And it has a focus both on commercial and residential redevelopment and reinvestment. And some of the whys, in addition to the things that I just covered, um, we know that there are properties that are blighted already within our community. And unfortunately, some of those are our most historical and prominent, um, um, locations in the community. We know that we have to address this in order to be attractive, retain our tax base, um, and the long-term health, fiscal health of our community. You know, we do have decline today. So some could say we are actually actively failing today at addressing, uh, redevelopment. But we do want to be a place where people want to be, where they want to gather, live, spend their money, locate their business. Um, we, we definitely want to continue, um, having that community image, that reputation, because frankly, you know, a, a lot is riding on that and, and our pride is at stake here. Um, and then also just the stewardship, stewardship obligation. We have a responsibility for those that we represent and that we are, you know, leading and, and growing a city here. And so we need to be mindful of, um, making sure that we're doing our best to represent them, uh, for the long-term, um, you know, for the long-term best interest and future generations to come. So some of the desired outcomes and expectations that we have identified so far, um, are listed up here. The ones with the asterisks next to them, I'm going to go into a little bit more detail, cause those are the ones that we are actively working on right now. Uh, the four that are at the bottom, those have a little bit longer, um, kind of a more midterm, uh, timeline associated with them, um, in the next, you know, over the next year or two years. Um, but the, the ones at the top are the ones that we are actively, uh, working on today. And there, there's many strategies that we're going to continue to identify, um, related to, to redevelopment as a whole. So this one you should be familiar with, cause you had an active role in, in this, um, this redevelopment, uh, journey for the Imperial Historic, um, District Site and the Char House. One of the main goals of this particular, um, portion of the initiative is related to, um, approval of incentives and development agreements. Now I know you may say, well, this isn't something that the commission gets involved in, um, but really just wanted to demonstrate that, um, redevelopment is very different. It is complex and, uh, we are needing to take a different approach, um, from maybe how we address, um, other redevelopment that has been tried in the past. If it, if it's easy, it's probably would have been done before. But it is bringing us more to the table and more of a partnership in order to, um, But it is bringing us more to the table and more of a partnership in order to make something happen here, especially with this location or this site being the number one of the number one priority for the city. So we're definitely taking a, a, a more active, proactive approach to, to this particular redevelopment. So that's necessitating agreements and being very active in, in making the redevelopment come about for this, the Imperial Historic District Site. Yes?
Lisa, do you see the council or maybe even a part of the Economic Development Department trying to go out and saying they, they, you know, they take the next rack and sort of put a vision around, hey, this is sort of what we'd like to see? And then having developers, because I think sometimes right now, we're waiting for the developer to come, right? With, with the idea, and then they might have one idea of part of it, but they, we don't have any idea what the rest of the rack's gonna look like.
Right, right.
That's caused a lot of consternation, I would say.
I think two examples that I have that I'll be touching on a little bit later are related to that, being more proactive in the visioning. So with Lake Point and then even Track Five, so I'll touch on those in, in a bit. So yeah, absolutely. Two other goals related to the Imperial Historic District Site specifically, it is really about jointly working on community engagement and communication out into the city, increasing the number of folks that are actively engaged and just aware of the project and all that it takes to get that off the ground and, and to be successful. Trying to decrease the number of inaccuracies, and so just making sure that there is accurate, factual information that is out and about in the city or in the community. And then, yeah, again, just crease, increasing the awareness and, and the trust surrounding the project, especially with the just, you know, iconic nature of the historic district side and the buildings that are there and the history that it has for this community. Making sure that, you know, there's enough or there's so much information out there that people have access to, so they know that everyone is taking this project very seriously. And then more the more, I guess the more mechanical, mechanics of, of this project is the zoning, so the entitlements and the actual development standards for this, for this particular development. So we went through the general development plan process. We're anticipating that the first final development phase will be coming forward sometime summer of this year. So another specific goal and, and action and task and projects that's associated with redevelopment is the mixed-use zoning districts. Three of you, Commissioner Smith and Brown and our chair, Matt Callagher, have been serving on a joint task force, advisory task force, along with three members of city council related specifically to this project. And this is something that is going to be coming forward in short order to the community and to you as a commission, and then eventually to city council. But this was one specific action that was identified in the land use plan to find a way to implement the regional and neighborhood activity centers that were designated as part of the plan through the creation of new, two new zoning districts, a neighborhood mixed-use district and a regional mixed-use district. As part of those efforts, there are six elements that are essential to the success of mixed-use districts that we've been using as guides as we've been crafting the, the zoning code itself, the mixed-use zoning code. So buy right housing, allowing enhanced housing options as, as well, aligning parking standards that actually meet demand so that it's not creating an excess of parking, making sure that we're very cognizant of buffering and transitions as they relate to any adjacencies to existing single-family areas, ensuring that there are form standards that create actual places for people that are pedestrian, walkable, friend, and, you know, bikeable and friendly in that, where people actually want to gather and be. And then also simplifying the development review process for mixed-use developments. If this is the type of development that we want, how can we make the process as easy and, and efficient as possible so that we actually see that development happening? So this will be very similar in terms of more of how our standard districts operate in, in, in terms of how they are implemented and actually applied to, to property and then actually used for that actual development. And then kind of the second goal, which is also one of the kind of key, key aspects of the, this creation of the zoning districts, is then proactively zoning property that we have targeted for mixed-use development. So as I mentioned, the city manager created a, a joint advisory task force with members from city council and from Planning and Zoning Commission. They've been working over the last year and a half on this project. Along the way, we've also been engaging with the development community because we want to make sure that we are creating something that is meaningful, that is useful, that will actually be helpful in getting the type of development that we are desiring. Along the way, we've also, we'll be looking to create opportunities to have public awareness and for the public to give feedback. And in fact, in a few weeks, we will have a town hall on May 8th where the public will have an opportunity to, to get an overview and, and start providing feedback as well. And then of course, at your May 9th, there will be a joint workshop between city council and Planning and Zoning Commission to get kind of an overview, which will be kind of the start of that public process and the, the formal adoption process, which will be wrapping up in summer of this year. So customers, Commissioner Smith, to your point here, I think is a, is a primary example of where we are more partnering with owner, property owners to look at redevelopment. So Lake Point is also one of the areas that is envisioned to redevelop. And some of the key goals that we've lined out related to seeing redevelopment actually happen here is identifying any of the infrastructure needs that, to allow denser, compact, more walkable development within this regional activity center specifically related to the floor campus site as one of the primary opportunities for redevelopment. So partnering on a redevelopment plan to lay out kind of what is, what is the redevelopment vision for that area that aligns with a much broader vision that's laid out in the, in the land use plan, but providing a little bit more detail through a targeted redevelopment plan effort. And then also the city was fortunate to be selected to have a livable center study. This is through the Houston Galveston Area Council. They have a program called the Livable Centers. And so it's an opportunity to really look at both the Lake Point area as well as we've combined it with the town center, so the town square and then kind of the, all of the regional activity center that it takes in the mall, the retail across the street from us, all the way down to Sweetwater. Looking at that, how, what are their opportunities for connectivity enhancements, mobility enhancements, land use? And so just kind of looking at, at this entire area. But again, it touches on the Lake Point Regional Activity Center as well. And then kind of transitioning to some of our residential focus. So you may have heard that the city recently launched a Great Homes pilot programs in February of this year. And there are kind of two components, two specific programs associated with this overall Great Homes effort, which the first one is related to design. So it's the Great Homes Design Program. It offers discounted exterior design services and produces essentially a list, a shopping list to help you implement that new home design that, that service has come up with. I don't have the numbers with me, but it has been very successful. There's been a lot of folks that have inquired about it, applied already, and taking advantage of both programs. Yeah, so we've been pleasantly, I don't have the numbers specifically in front of me right now, but I've, I've heard that it's been very, very well received and folks are anxiously taking advantage of it. And then the second is the Great Homes Update Program. So this is a reimbursement incentive program to encourage the rehabilitation and refurbishment of the exterior of single-family properties. So both of these working kind of in tandem to encourage reinvestment, again, in our aging housing stock, and really just to grow opportunities to enhance our neighborhoods because we know that they're more attractive to folks that are living there and maybe even attractive to bringing new folks into our community. What can we do to, to kind of upgrade, to modernize, to reinvigorate our, our neighborhoods? I did include a QR code here. There are, there are eligibility requirements and just more about the process that you can learn about through a fully dedicated website related to these programs. Okay, this is my last slide. So in addition to everything that I've covered, I mentioned that there are kind of some look aheads, specifically some other pilot programs, infrastructure and process improvements, regulation improvements. One of them, similar to the residential reinvestment, there also will be a program that we are starting to put together related to commercial improvement. So maybe facade improvements or other types of enhancements targeted to the commercial centers that we have here. Also, taking a look at the Track Five University area, looking to vision out what that area is, doing some market study to see what that area can, can become around the Smart Financial Center area. Also looking, frankly, this is probably an example of, of, of something that we don't have direct control over, but partnering with POAs. We have a, a study that will be underway with FCCSA shortly to look at, study and look at commercial and residential design guidelines. What can, what opportunities are there there to make some changes to those, to again, allow some modernization, some, some rehab of updating of our residential and commercial areas? So one thing that we have heard is that that can be a potential barrier for folks that, whether it's commercial centers or even residential property owners, to wanting to make some updates and upgrades to their, their houses or commercial centers, is kind of some outdated or, yeah, outdated design standards and design guidelines at the, the Property Owners, Property Owners Association level. Also looking internally, what can we do from low-impact design and related to our stormwater and detention needs? What policies, incentives could we look to encourage the use of that so that they're more amenitized and, and, and helpful rather than being just, you know, large swathes of land that are holding water maybe sometimes? So what can we do to make sure that those are real amenities and for the area and support the area around them? And then also frankly, looking at our development code and our review processes. How can we modernize, modernize our standards, improve the code overall for clarity? And then just reevaluating and finding ways to optimize our review processes. Are there opportunities to streamline? Are there opportunities to create efficiencies, maybe even consolidate some of the processes? So overall, just looking at how can we evaluate all barriers to redevelopment? And whether they are directly in our control or, or out of our control, how can we engage with those partners to address them, to be able to, to, to work through redevelopment? So that is my last slide, and I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
So we'll, we'll go around the horn, but first, maybe I'll invite Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Brown just to give your, your point of view on serving on that task force. I think that would help. Maybe not the specifics of everything here, and we'll leave plenty of time for your own specific questions, but I think we'd benefit from just hearing about y'all's experience.
No, I think it's been, it's been very good. I mean, you know, staff has been involved. We've had, you know, the mayor, council, council members are, are part of the task force as well. I think that we're sort of landing, I think, on, on at least the proposal. I think from, from the way that I view it, you know, it is trying to give really more clarity by, by really, it's almost like relinquishing at least some of the standards and making them more standard and allowing the staff to make those decisions. I think that as we move into that, we've got to sort of understand, you know, how we still put, you know, one, the communication back to the council and how we put, you know, some level of checks and balances, not necessarily control, but checks and balances as decisions are made, you know, for, for development. But I think overall, it's been a really good process, you know, and I feel, you know, I feel pretty good about what, what at least is coming out.
Yeah, it's, it's eye-opening, and as you look around the city, and I had the comment with the mayor last time, we, we did a lot of things that we should have done different in the beginning, and this is kind of an opportunity to hit the reset button. And I, I keep going back to this as, as an example, but we put the, the dumpsters in the backs of our buildings again, along our waterways, you know, and, and little things like that that were nuanced that have kind of set us up in a place that we need to go back and do, and do some of this redevelopment. And, and it's exciting to see that the racks and the knacks are being considered. It's gonna be incredibly difficult because you look at it and you think, okay, we're gonna have buy right housing, we're gonna have all these other moving parts. Well, if someone comes in and only gets part of that rack or part of that knack, how do you divide that up? How does that work? So there's gonna be a lot of moving parts that make this a very intricate dance. It's not a really simple overlay, so to speak. It's gonna be something that, that is, is gonna be really, really good. The one thing I encourage, and Commissioner Smith talked about a little bit, is the relinquishment of control to staff. My only comment on this, and I'm sharing this with you guys because I won't be here next week, is I really encourage that whatever we come up with in those areas where we're gonna allow the director to make decisions, it's gotta be transparent. Because I think right now, we've got an issue with, our community doesn't trust, which I think is incorrect, but they don't trust us. And I think if we can set up in a way that, that those decisions, while they may be made by the director, whoever it is, I, I think it's gotta be more than one person so that we, we have some, some, something here that makes it look like we're doing the right things. Because truly, that's what we're trying to do, right? I think we've gone from, we saw what happened to Sugar Creek, and we're trying to put things in place now that will allow us to, to, to move the city forward and get them going. And then the challenge beyond that is gonna be, you know, we're gonna change these guidelines or we're gonna, we're gonna make these great places for us to have businesses and residences. We gotta advertise that. We gotta get out there. Our developers gotta know we have it, and the people have gotta know that those things and those options are out there. But I think it's a, a really great starting place for where we're gonna be, where we're going.
I know that in the last meeting, we talked about it, and that's how Kamai had talked about that visioning. And we had talked about, you know, sort of the need of maybe putting, you know, an overall vision around some of these racks, and then using that then as a tool to go out to developers. So you have a little bit better roadmap, like, you know, what Commissioner Brown was saying, was like, well, if somebody only gets this little piece, at least you have an idea of what's envisioned. It may not be that at the end of the day, but at least what's envisioned for that rack. So I think that will be, you know, I think it was sort of kicked around a little bit, but I don't sure it was actually taken as, yeah, we wanna go do that and with whichever rack. But I think that's, I think that will actually help with the communication as well.
Thank y'all for, for that.
Sure, and just, and just kind of wanted to address one of the points in terms of like the control. I mean, even with our standard districts that we have today that are implemented by staff on a day-to-day basis, we, we aren't the ones that are, oh, should we implement this one, this standard or this? I mean, it is this, they, they are what they are, and our role is to implement them. The ones that, if we do need to change them, we will definitely come back through the process. We, we know specifically with the mixed-use code, this is, this is our best effort right now, and, and there will be things that we need to come back and evaluate and, and kind of take into consideration how it, how it is landing over time, and then come back if there are changes. So we're not, we're not saying that this is 100% out of the gate, gonna be great and, no, 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 no. We're, we're totally, we're being upfront and being transparent about that, that this isn't the, the one and done, where this is something that we are trying, we're gonna see how it goes and, but we're also very open to making changes over time if, if we need to. But, but to the point where, you know, we, all of the standard districts do have all of the regulations that we do implement. And, you know, again, they are the code that we live by and we implement them as they are given to us or as they are adopted by city council. And so- And so, yeah.
Putting any standards in place just essentially replaces the PPE, which is what we're doing.
Right. It's kind of the, provides more standards upfront, more predictability. The development community knows, like, if you want to develop here, this is, this is what you have to do, and it's not the back and forth.
And I think as we move towards that, whatever that, you know, new standard is, that I think is the keys, that the community understands that because they may be expecting the, you know, a decision's going to be made, and they're like, well, hey, you know, how did that happen without having like a, you know, a public discussion? And I think that's sort of going to be the key with what we go forward with. Because this buy right housing will be, you know, part of that.
And those will be things that we definitely cover at the town hall. So we're going to be plugging that and hoping people, you know, the first of several opportunities to weigh into that.
So Lisa, for the purposes of this workshop, what is most beneficial for staff? Is, do you want it to be, what type of feedback is useful? Or was this simply designed as sort of a, just an informational session for us?
Yes, informational. So you, maybe you probably already know this, but wanted to take the opportunity for us to share that this is the number-one priority. There is going to be a need for us to do things differently. We are recognizing that we need to look at our codes, we need to look at our processes, we need to probably do things differently, and some of that may take the form of, you know, very streamlined processes. Some of it may take the form of just very different approaches that the city takes in order to really support redevelopment, especially in very key areas like the Historic District or other regional activity centers going forward. So it's not about just waiting, in some cases, for everybody to come to us. We may be out there actively, you know, looking for the people that we know that can do the development in the way that we want it to be done, all with the emphasis being on the long-term health and success of the city going forward. So.
Okay. Let's, I'll open it up. Commissioner Patel, any comments or questions?
May 8th?
Yes.
Is that the 21th meeting? And where is that going to be?
So it's here at City Hall. It's a town hall, so it's going to be in the evening, I think here in this room, in fact, and probably out in the lobby. So it's going to be an opportunity to provide an overview of the mixed-use code, an opportunity for the public to ask questions, provide any feedback at the time. So it's kind of an introduction, if you will, an overview of the mixed-use code and the process that we've gone through to date. And after that, the code will be available, draft code will be available online for people to really get in there and look at and provide feedback in other ways as we go and start the formal review and adoption process with the Commission and City Council.
Okay, and so the next day is the workshop discussing?
May 9th, yes. So that will be specifically for Commission and Council to convene in joint session to get an overview, and we'll lay out the next steps that we'll be going through.
And how will we advertise the May 8th through the HOAs?
In all ways that we can. So there's a quarterly HOA next week that we'll be advertising it at, social media, listserv that we have, various forms and all tools available to get the word out about that.
Okay.
Great question.
Good. Commissioner Smith, anything else?
No, nothing to add, but I think this was a good overview, so, you know, thank you for the, for the information. I think some of the upcoming efforts were things that I wasn't necessarily aware of. So I think that was very useful. And the rest of it was more of a, you know, if you keep, if you keep banging and saying the same, and getting the information over and over again, you'll be able to, you know, totally internalize it. So thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll just echo everybody, what everybody else is saying. This is great for us to have, and I think the more town halls, marketing, for lack of a better word, that the city does to get all the residents on board with what the vision is so that it doesn't look like we're doing a lot of piecemeal projects that require so much amendments to land use plans and this and that. So I think that's the next part of this, is the selling, so to speak, of what the vision is and making sure that everyone's on the same page and that we all agree that this is, these are the right things to do and these projects become quality projects, we get good developers to come do business with us, and ultimately, we achieve the goals that we want. So this is great to see because it gives us context, at least, on what's coming and some of the thought process around it. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And frankly, I mean, this, this effort isn't just the Planning and Development Services Department or Economic Development. It is permeating throughout the organization in terms of, that's how much of a priority it is for, for the city, you know, staff and obviously for City Council. And so we're finding all different kinds of ways that we can really address redevelopment.
Very good. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, not a lot to add other than I love the all-in verbiage you used in the descriptive here. And I know how much staff has put into making this happen, and it's exciting. As a 29-year Sugar Land resident, it's really exciting to see what's going on out there. And getting, getting the message out is going to be critical so that our residents understand and in marketing this thing so we can do it. So thank you for putting this together. I know it's been a lot of work for staff. Kareem, I know you've been neck-deep in this since it started. So keep it going, don't let it lose momentum, and don't let the small group that is the vocal group bring down what could possibly be a very good thing for Sugar Land.
I understand.
So I had a, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but as everybody knows, going back to whatever, 2017, I guess, and being a part of the land use process, you know, what was intended to be a, you know, a really great document to be able to guide a lot of the decisions has been weaponized over the past, you know, in certain ways, in certain quarters, in order to, you know, give something to point, for people to point to, that that doesn't fit within however they're interpreting the plan. And so maybe it's just an encouragement that, to take a, you know, take a hard look at the role that that plays and either clarify it. And, you know, there's always a discussion about ordinance or guidance and all this kind of thing, right? So, you know, when we get in these discussions and we have such, such great opportunities being brought forward, it, you know, then you, then you find yourself having a conversation around process and, and that takes, takes away from what we're all trying to move forward together on. So again, just, just more comment than anything else.
No, I mean, I'll just add, I mean, while it was a tremendous effort for our community...
Feel free to say whatever you'd like.
No, I mean, no, it was a tremendous, I mean, and there were a lot of great outcomes to it. We also knew that it wasn't etched in stone. We, in fact, we described that and explained that as part of the plan, that it is something, that it is a living and it deserves to be able to be relooked at and reevaluated. And so, you know, we're not offended by that, that while we think it's a fantastic document, it provides a lot of great guidance. We also know that times change, things change, and we have to...
Pandemic happened.
Pandemics happen, yeah. Things that just, we would have never have guessed. And so it warrants, it warrants a relook at every once in a while. Yep.
No, that's, that's great. It's just, maybe that's just more the scars of some...
It's all good.
Some long-ago fights. But, and then the last thing I'll say is, I mean, the, you know, fear is a really, really good motivator. And my, my hope, and this kind of echoes what Commissioner Brown was saying, is that we can quickly get into, and we're already seeing it, the vision part of this that gets people excited. And I think that that requires leadership, which we're seeing from the city by putting things like this together and commitment to communicating the impact it's going to have on the, on the community. So this is, you know, there's a lot of inputs here, and, but it feels like we're trending in an exciting direction, so.
Absolutely. No, I mean, it's, it's super important. It, an approach could, an easy approach could be just to maybe stick our head in the sand and say it's going to blow over and everything will come back together. But frankly, I know at the city level, we don't want to take that risk because there could be just tremendous decline or just bad outcomes that we just, we just don't want to take the risk of that being what happens. And so this is why you see us really putting this at the forefront and really being all-in and making this the top priority is that we have the ability to influence and do whatever and really demonstrate to our citizens, residents, property owners, businesses, that we're taking this very seriously and doing whatever we can to influence, you know, an outcome that is better for us in the long run.
One last comment. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. I just, you touched on this briefly, and it's, it's the private family housing that we've got out there and the challenges that exist out in our neighborhoods, and that is the older homes, and in particular institutionalized ownership of these homes. And I, if you walk through my neighborhood, I can point out to the homes that are the most challenged, and those are the rental homes. And I just say that to say this, the other side of this, and you know this probably, is we can do everything in the world with racks and ax and redevelopment, but if our neighborhoods fail, none of that matters. So this has got to be kind of a combined effort, and I'm sure you're working on it, but I just want to make sure we're thinking about that.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we're very cognizant also of the relationship between the commercial and the residential because if the commercial areas start failing or declining, those have a, it may not be an immediate impact, but it even could be a perception that a broader area is failing. And so we're very cognizant of that and the relationship between the two and making sure that they're, you know, working in tandem. And so that's why you see the redevelopment is focused on both the commercial and the residential aspects.
Very good. Thank you, Lisa. We appreciate it, and thank you to everybody on the city staff that's contributed to this. I'm sure it is...
Huge effort.
...occupying much of your life these days. So moving on to 6A reports, Commission liaison reports. I believe I had both of these, and the only thing to report out is the approval by City Council of the overlay district at the mall. That was the most material to our work here. So with that, item 6B, Lisa, are you giving the staff report?
Yep. So just your next item or your next meeting will be May 9th, and that's your joint session with City Council. It's a workshop. Yep, we will be starting early at 6:00 PM. So I think we've polled everybody that that is something that works for you all, so look forward to seeing you all there.
All right, very good.
Thanks.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Thanks, everybody. We are adjourned.